All right, seven o'clock, we'll call the regular monthly meeting, the Ellsworth City Council's Order Monday, July seventeenth, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Appears to be all councils are present. You all please stand while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Item three, rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order, plus rules and procedures adopted at the annual organizational meeting. And at this point, if anyone has a pager or a wonderful cellphone or anything like that, please be sure they're off or silent. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meeting, six nineteen twenty-seventeenth, regular monthly meeting.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? That'd be unanimous. City managers report, Mr. Cole?
There will be a hazardous waste collection day on Saturday, August nineteenth, here in Ellsworth. You need to preregister here at City Hall if you're going to participate. Again, that's from nine to 1:00 PM here in Ellsworth at Ellsworth High School. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Item six, committee reports. Anyone that attended any meetings during the last month with news for the rest of the council? Mr. Moore?
Well, I went to the harbor meeting.
Go ahead.
Very interesting. What really was interesting is that so far they've collected 25,000-plus in fees, docking fees, slip fees and so forth. That's a good start. And they mentioned that June started out pretty slowly. I think most of us can remember that the spring wasn't that nice.
Yeah.
And so it took a while to get the bodas ready to go out into the cold water. They've had a big increase in gas sales down there this year. It's 919 gallons this month. And last year's this time sold 536, so they're doing pretty well there. The concert shares, their series have started. I attended the one last Friday, and it was nice. Sitting in the vault and watching them do their things. And repairs are being made to the sign that was damaged by Marty. The sign wasn't damaged by Marty. Marty's fixing the sign from Studio Three.
And the Snack Shack is open, right?
Snack Shack is.
Good.
Yes, good burgers, big ones. Nice burgers.
So you've tested already?
I have.
Good. Thank you. Any other committees, councils or committees?
Just a question to the harbor, and David, if you'll listen too. I've had some complaints from people that we have a beautiful handicap access to the gazebo with a big cement log in front of it. You can't get a wheelchair in there. So...
Zone out of it.
Okay.
Good planning.
Yep.
And that's it. Yet for committees? Citizen comments, this portion of meeting will allow a couple minutes of time to bring our attention to anything that's not on the agenda, no action will be taken. Okay, one, yes, sir, if you'd like to take the podium, give us a quick synopsis.
My name is Brett Chikatelli. I'm on the Green Plan Steering Committee here in Ellsworth. And, oh, there you go. And we've been trying just to come monthly and update some of the things we've been doing this past month. For those who don't know, the Green Plan is a bunch of partner organizations, including the city, the planning department, the garden club, Friendship Bay Conservancy, I work with the Down East Salmon Federation, but there's a host of people that we brought together after a visioning session to focus on six issues. One is green and conserve spaces in the cities, in the city, waterfront, waterways and water management, sustainable maintenance and environmental interface, waste management, recycling, composting, renewable energy, energy efficiency, public transport and sustainable development. So we meet monthly. In the last month, our big news is that we've gotten some funding for that committee to pay for some of the staff time that's going into it and also help produce the final document and pay for facilitator that can be used to help sort of advise the city as we make some plans around those six focus areas. And I think what that says is that our work people are interested in outside of the city, which I think is a good thing. And from there, our goal is to work with the council and have workshops around those six issues. So hopefully they'll be hearing from us soon about some of those. I think the first one is going to be on waterways and the river. And even just tonight, there's actually an event opposite the council meeting at the library, part of our education series. So Reece R. Manley is presenting about his book. And so in conjunction with the workshop of the council, we'll be having public meetings and trying to do educational activities. So if you guys have any questions, you can reach us through Gary. Gary's at Ordon and both have been to our meetings, so they know how to get ahold of us.
Yo Green?
Thank you.
She was my stand-in last week.
And yo Green too. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Thank you. Presentation of awards, I see none listed. Consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. All items that would be considered as routine will be enacted by one motion. If anyone wants to remove one. Anyway, number nine, council order zero seven one seven hundred, acceptance of Barbara Higginbar's resignation from the planning board, alternate two position with a term that's expired on June thirty, 2018. Council order zero seven one seven oh one, request of the recreation committee to appoint Jody Burkett as a member of the recreation committee. Commission term to expire June thirty, 2018. Anybody in the council who wished to remove either item from the agenda? Seeing and no takers, may I have a motion, please?
Move the consent agenda as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Ananamous. We have several licenses on the counter.
Before you do that, Mr. Chairman, if I could just speak to that number ten, just off the record, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
Just looking at the qualifications and what was presented to us, I'm excited about the potential there for that new member to give us some good insight going forward in the area of recreational parks.
That's just some great experience.
Right.
I tell you that it's the first time in the years that I've been on that commission that we've recommended someone without meeting them.
Yeah. Looks good, anywhere on paper.
Well, respected.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Of the licenses on here, and I'll ask staff, any problems of any, everything is fine with all, correct? We'll start with the Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, two seven four three, three seventeen High Street, for renewal of a city class B license, victual alcohol, special amusement and renewal of a state club on premise with catering, malt, spiritus and vinous, class one liquor license. Any questions from council? Seeing none, public hearing is open on the request of the lodge for renewal, of Elks Lodge for renewal. Any input from the audience? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, council action on the lodge Elks request.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Ananamous. Second on the agenda is Paul Linska doing businesses, Eastwood Bowling Lanes and Eastwood Lounge, twenty-five Eastwood Lane, late suite six, for renewal of a city class B license, arcade over twelve units, victular and alcohol, and renewal of a state restaurant, malt, vinous, class three and four liquor license. Questions from council? Seeing none, public hearing is open on the request of Eastwood Bowling Lanes for renewal. Public input? Seeing none, hearing is now closed. Motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second. All those in favor? Ananamous. Next item, Michael DeBeck doing businesses, Hot Shots Bar and Grill, one ninety-three Main Street, for a new, new city class B license, amusement, alcohol, victual and a new state restaurant, lounge, malt, spiritus and vinous, class eleven liquor license. Do we have a representative here from Hot Shots? Please state your name for the record.
Michael DeBeck.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Any questions from Mr. DeBeck from council? Seeing none, public hearing is now open on the request of Mr. DeBeck for a new license. Any input from the public? Seeing none, hearing closed. Council action?
Move to approve the application of Michael K. DeBeck.
Second. Moving second, all those in favor? Ananamous. Jennifer Goodrich, Wing doing businesses, Pepper's Pub Incorporated, twenty-first Street, for renewal of a city class B license, amusement, victual and alcohol, renewal of a state restaurant, lounge, malt, spiritus, vinous, class eleven liquor license. Questions? Public hearing is now open on the request of Pepper's Pub for renewal. Any public input? Seeing none, hearing is closed. Motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, just one question if I may?
Yes, sir.
On the application, it said the signature wasn't there. Was there a new, one that came in with the signature that said forgot to sign? Is that necessary?
No, I can do that when she puts the stuff up, she just dropped off.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. There was a senior moment after I had that bump in the road. So that's a motion to approve, is there a second, was there?
John, seconded it.
Good. Thanks. And everyone's in favor, right? All in favor. Yeah, that's good. Huh. Week off and it's been nice. Okay, Melanie Armafoggs doing businesses, Helen's Restaurant of Ellsworth, fifty-five Down East Highway, for renewal of a class C license, victual and alcohol and renewal of a state restaurant, malt, spiritus and vinous, class one, two, three and four liquor license. Questions from council? Public hearing is now open, any input from the public on the request of Helen's Restaurant? Council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval for the request of Helen's Restaurant for renewal of licenses.
Second.
Moving second, and all those in favor? Council order, item twelve, council order zero seven one seven oh two, request of the city manager to negotiate an easement envelope allowing Acadia Arena ice over the city land.
Okay. In your memo of June twenty-six, there's a description there of the location of the proposed ice arena, known as Acadia Arena or the Landing at Whitney Park. The council has had previous discussions on this issue, so I think you all know the background of it, but for the public, just a moment on that. There is a group proposing to build an ice arena near the high school, just off on, off Lee Jock Street, and it's landlocked otherwise unless they can get access off Lee Jock Street or by some other means, which I don't think would be practicable. As you know, as you're going up the new high school entrance road, it veers off to the left towards the high school and there's a little stub right there where it turns, and that's where the proximity area would turn off to go to the proposed arena. The developers are requesting that the city work with them to develop an easement arrangement so they can have access to the site as they're out fundraising, obviously, to potential donors. You know, it's good to know that the city is interested in developing this access, which obviously would be great complement to the high school as well, you know, as the community. So you have a proposal here on the back of your, of the memo. City planner, Gagnon, has developed what she has termed an easement envelope, because at this point until the facility is designed, we don't know exactly where we go, but we're comfortable it could fit within the broader corridor of this easement envelope. So the basic request tonight is to authorize the city manager to negotiate an easement with Acadia Arena over this easement envelope. It would come back to the council for approval, but I think this is helpful to them in their fundraising efforts to be able to say the committee, the, excuse me, the council directed the manager that this is an expression of interest on your part. I would say that I sent you a memo today to clarify one point. While the primary purpose of this easement is traffic ingress and egress into the site, it is possible that it may be needed for other utility easements such as drainage or telecommunications or whatever. However, it's not intended that water or sewer would come up Lee Jock Street. As we've discussed before, the idea is that the sewer would come from a different direction, water would come up from the standpipe. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record, and I have modified the proposed motion to reflect that. So if it's the council's wishes, I would, I would suggest that you move the proposed motion on the memo of same day, July seventeenth, and we will work with the proponents and bring back an easement for the council to consider.
Thank you. Any questions of the manager?
Just wondering, Mr. Chairman, I just wondered, did this, did this have passed legal muster? Have we talked to the attorney? Yes, yes, we've talked to Ed Barrick, legal counsel.
Thank you.
Any help prepare the resolution?
Good.
I don't, I don't recall if we've brought this up in a, you know, previous council meeting for the public.
I don't believe so.
But just to give some clarification to it, this project, as it was described to us, is, is very, very impressive. And if they're successful, it's going to be a huge thing for the city of Ellsworth.
Great asset.
It's going to involve a lot of, a lot of work.
Be a great asset for the city and send a marvelous location too, Jason, the schools and the else. Mr. Fordy?
And I'll continue down that road. What impresses me about this project, it's the second tier of land is not right on one A. It comes out to a brand-new traffic control signal. It's walking distance for the students to get there from either school so they can utilize it after school and stuff. And there's also in the initial plans, an outside sheet.
Right.
I don't have to snow blow that one. I'm excited.
Sure they'll accept volunteers, though.
But you're buying it anyway, right?
Huh? No.
You won't have to get the grass growing either.
Or wait till for March for it to freeze.
Yeah. For two days.
I hope they get their funding.
And I hope it's a success. It's a marvelous plan and what they had shown us, it's a, it's a, it'd be a mar, a great asset for the city.
The people on the list are supporters and of this aren't used to failure, so I have pretty good...
Do what we can to help them move along.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready.
Oh, you make such long motions, David. Be resolved that the Ellsworth City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to negotiate an easement with Acadia Arena at Whitney Landing, current holder of interest in the real estate depicted as map thirty-four lot seven of the city of Ellsworth tax map and known as the Whitney Parcel. Said easement is to be on city-owned land depicted as map thirty-four lot five, and more particularly that portion of lot five, which is sewn as easement envelope on the attached plan labeled Exhibit A. Primary purpose of said easement is to achieve access, ingress and egress to the proposed arena site on terms and conditions to be negotiated by the city manager, subject to final approval by the Ellsworth City Council.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Item thirteen, council order zero seven one seven oh three, discussion and action on permitting a beer tasting tent on the waterfront for Friday evening, September twenty-second, in conjunction with Autumn Gold Weekend. Good evening.
Good evening. Gretchen Wilson, Executive Director of the Ellsworth Chamber of Commerce. We would like to draw on the success of last year's small beer tasting tent, which was just further down towards where the old septic system was last year. We had a small tent. We followed the Chowder Fest event, probably around, what was it, two or three o'clock in the afternoon, with three brewers and a wine eventer. We had about a hundred people there and it was a great success. We would like to move that event to Friday evening around four o'clock, have it run from either four to six, four to seven, so that it has sort of its own set time and place, that it is drawing our younger single professionals, it's drawing people from work, and it is not during the Saturday, which is more of the family event type of, of day, so that we're not having kids coming from the Chowder Fest or from the, the boat rides, that sort of thing. So we're saving Saturday for what it truly is, it's a family day. And so that we're also adding an event that is for a different demographic, and we haven't done that. And the chamber recognizes that we do need to do that with Autumn Gold. We're going to use the same tent that we already have down there, so we're saving our resources. We have that Chowder Fest tent down there. We hope to have between six and eight brewers down there, some music and some food. And the idea would be that people would go downtown later for concerts at the Grand, concerts downtown, food, that sort of thing, so adding to the Autumn Gold Weekend.
Sounds...
We have six to eight brewers and wineries already interested.
Wow.
Yeah.
Sounds good. It worked well last year during the day.
It did, it did. And again, I think, I think it will work better at this timeframe where people don't have their kids with them, they're coming after work and then staying in town to visit our restaurants. Any questions?
Thank you, Flynn. Questions? Mr. Beatham?
Are you going to have a finite number of tickets or it's just going to be an open number of tickets?
We are going to probably have to have a finite number of tickets because of the tent and we have to stay within that tent space, particularly if it rains. So we will get that, you know, that standing room number from Wallace as to what that can hold and also obviously from the police and fire department.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure Mike will hold me too.
Just to hang you, let you know.
I'm sure he will.
He's making notes.
Yes. He's my new best friend. Often.
Free beer tickets.
Any further questions?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Especially as we try to entice more beer services downtown and try to get other pop-up shops to come in. I think it's a great, great way to introduce people to...
Is that kind of a motion to approve it?
Absolutely. I'd move, move to approve the request of the Autumn Gold Weekend Beer Tasting Tent on the waterfront.
Second. All those in favor? Ananamous.
Thank you.
You've got a venue, thank you. Item fourteen, council order zero seven one seven oh four, request of the city manager to authorize and execute a contract for engineering services at Woodard and Kern for the High Street booster station capacity upgrade project.
Move the table.
Second. All those in favor?
That's a quick...
Table. Item fifteen, council order zero seven one seven oh five, request of the wastewater treatment superintendent to purchase a plow truck for the wastewater treatment plant from Down East Commercial Sales in the amount of thirty-five thousand, four fifty-eight, to be funded for the remaining SRF program monies.
Move the table.
Please.
Second.
Another second? All those in favor? Council order sixteen, sixteen, zero seven one seven oh six, request of the wastewater treatment superintendent to purchase a Vogel Saarun rotary low pump in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred, to be funded for the remaining SRF program monies. Move the table?
Move the table.
Second. All those in favor? Item seventeen, council order zero seven one seven oh seven, request of the water superintendent to award the bid for a new twenty-eighteen four-wheel drive regular work, which is fast, regular cab work truck.
Oh, wait, no, I won't go that one. No, I'm Reggie, dude.
Hello.
See, a bid came back and it's a Dodge?
It did. That was the lowest bid price we got.
Are you comfortable with the truck?
Yes.
Questions from council?
I, I just had one. Knowing that it's a work truck and knowing that you bought in a V-eight engine instead of the V-six...
Yes.
I question why you weren't interested in the two thousand seventeen three-quart-ton for seven, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars more. You get a beefier truck.
The, the reason I didn't consider the Ford was because when I sent the bids out, it was for a two thousand eighteen, and they gave us a bid for a two thousand seventeen. I didn't believe that'd be fair to the other three vendors.
Well, I appreciate your fairness, but this council has the right to change that.
Yeah.
I just, I just asked you a question.
No, that's, that's the only reason I didn't...
Is the seventeen truck a better truck for what you're going to use it for than the eighteen that's all bid?
Yes, it would, it would definitely serve its purpose a lot better than the, than the half-ton.
What do you, is it used for routes or is it used for moving equipment around? What do you use it for?
Roads and we have a vacuum trailer that has the potential to be very heavy at times when we clean out service boxes and stuff. Holds a lot of wet dirt, which, which could squat the truck pretty well and put quite a bit of strain on it.
My point, Mr. Chairman, is, is...
I understand.
They're both brand-new trucks.
Yes.
They both have the same warranty.
Yes.
And if it's better served by a year older truck, and we go up to a three-quart-ton, which is a beefier truck, I, hundred, ten thousand GVW, one hundred and forty-two wheel base, I just think it's a better, better product for what they're using it for.
I have to agree with Reggie, though, I'm sorry. You raised your hand, I did not. I have to agree with Reggie, though, if we put out a bid asking for a certain specification and a dealership, dealerships gave us specs and prices on what we asked for and one didn't, but that's the truck that would be better, then we should put out another request for bids for exactly what it is you want, two thousand seventeen's or whatever, the other specs that, so that the other dealerships have a chance to make, you know, present what they have, that's not two thousand eighteen.
Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Beatham, your comments?
Nope, no comment.
Kind of the same area she was headed?
Yep.
And a darling's Ford did not put in an alternate on an eighteen, he was one and one only.
Yes.
This, yeah, let me interrupt you.
This has happened to us in the past and we've thrown them out because we've asked for two
thousand eighteen. We wanted two thousand seventeen, we would've said two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
It, not being fair to the other vendors, and I realize it's less money, but we really don't need a three-quart-ton for a service truck.
That's...
I have a three-quart-ton that's going to be passed on to Reggie, so there is a three-quart-ton with a plow, it's new. We only need a half-ton, pull that back trailer up. We might pull it once or twice, but if we're really using the lot, we have three-quart-ton trucks to pull that back.
So you have alternates, and that's why I was wondering if it did more, if there's more...
Get all three-quart-ton trucks, and I'll tell you right now, the guys won't like the three-quart-ton as well as the half-ton because it rides like a...
Yeah, like you're sitting on a rock.
I have them. They're not really a service truck to keep running in the area.
So it does work...
Forward ride is to get out to the lake when the guy's on duty on the weekend and Reggie's home with the forward ride with the plow on, and he's doing plowing, the guy still can get in and out of the lake, we have a mild wind, might not be plowed right there, might be slippery, we haven't sanded it or something. It's one of the last roads to get done if sanding because it's, well, it's not private. We don't need to have it sanded as quick as the public needs to have it pre-sanded.
So I asked a question, if it was more of a meter, meter of your servicing truck than it was a...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've been explained. I withdraw my complaint.
Okay, no, it's fine.
That's what I wanted, an answer.
Yeah, no, we got it. Yes.
Thank you.
So if we, I mean, would it not be worth looking at the two thou, if they have brand-new two thousand seventeen's and the eighteen's are coming out, if we can get the brand-new seventeen's for a better price, wouldn't it make sense to look at that?
The three-quart-ton, we don't need three-quarts.
But do they not have seventeen's that are in half-tons?
I have no idea, that's why we had for two thousand eighteen. I mean, we don't need this truck today.
Sure. But I'm sure they have two thousand, this needs to...
You gotta meet our specs.
Half-tons are not brand-new in two thousand eighteen, correct?
Yeah. They, we order it, order it to our specs.
Yeah, the truck hasn't been built yet.
I see. So eighteen's would have been ones that are on the lot that may not have the specs that you're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. If it's cheaper and it needs to be, that really wouldn't matter if it was stale. It's brand-new.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Have we had Dodge before? Dodge pickups?
Long time ago... A long time ago, the Highway Department had Dodge. I've never owned a Dodge. Reggie can talk to you about Dodge, he owns a Dodge.
I love mine, I've had two. As far as the city... Well over 200,000 miles.
And as, as far as city use, the way they get used, you'd be comfortable with a Dodge?
Yes.
Council of Beatham has one too and he loves it.
If you're asking me that, I say don't.
I have a minivan. I love it.
Okay.
He's probably driving it longer than you are.
Ms. Chairman, move to approve the request to award the purchase of a new 2018 Ram Tradesman 1500 as specified for the Ward Department to the lowest bidder, Dowling's Commercial Dodge, at a cost of $23,197 to be paid through the Ward Department Capital Improvement Account.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Abstaining. That's it. I forgot. I knew you'd pick one of those choices. Motion carries. You have a new Dodge. Congratulations. 18. Council 071708, Request of the Public Works Director to Award the Hot Pot Tub and its Asphalt Contract for Maintenance Paving. Why, good evening!
Good evening. Again, this year we went up the bid, we had, we sent up four, four and we received three back. Lane's Construction was the lowest at $492,323.50. We will be spending, if you approve this bid, will be $333,000, $259.04 out of the local roads, $500,000 that we have. And the excess amount of $70,566.45 before paving Forest Avenue be funded from the bond proceeds. And an estimated amount of $102,558.90 for paving Forest and the Bayside Road to be funded in future financing.
Unit prices similar to where last year?
What was that?
What were unit prices you did last year, do you remember? Close?
Not off the top of my head, but they have gone up.
A little bit?
Yes.
Not substantial though, Ms.?
Not really.
Counsel question?
We still have $166,740.96 left in local roads.
I've got a question. You mentioned that a portion of the Bayside Road is to be funded in future financing?
That would be Mrs. Mox's job to answer that question.
So the city manager and myself have been speaking with the bond council about paving that area road and we're gonna use, we'll get a ban for that project, so this, that's why we wrote it that way, to include future financing, so which will be coming to in August.
Is that the, the portion between Little Brook and Beachland?
Yes, yes.
Your arch nemesis.
How much is it, 2,500 feet?
I would add that if the council chose whatever reason not to proceed with that future funding, this project on the Bayside Road's a gotta do in my calculation, so I think we would have to forego other paving projects to make room for this. This is a project that needs to get done either way. And the, the bid is up to 500,000, that does not mean we have, excuse me, 492,000, that does not mean we have to spend the entire 492,000.
No, we, if you finance those two, we'll only spend the 333,000. But you still could finance that 102 out of your local roads if you chose not to fund it.
And I also just wanted to add that we do have some funds available from last year, about $172,000 left to work.
How'd that happen? How'd you slip that by me?
Just one quick question.
She hasn't got all the bills in yet.
Do they think, do they think they'll be able to get this this fall?
Yeah.
They will be doing it before fall. They just finished up Liberty and Willow Street today and I asked him to hold off on the Branch Pond Road because we're doing 2,000 feet with last year's, the bid this year is do 2,000 more, now we can do the 4,000, only have one joint instead of two joints. So, and also it was wet in the spring and we had to rebuild ditches and culverts and everything. But yes, it will be done or I'm gonna stick him to the bid.
Soon, I hope. The neighbors are complaining in my neighborhood.
I have a feeling it's gonna be done right away because we got rid of 1A. That has been a nightmare for them.
Perfect. Any further questions? Motion? Great hit, Mr. Moore.
This is right off the page here.
That's it.
There you go.
Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to Award the 2017 Maintenance Paving Bid to the Lowest bidder, the Lane Construction Corporation, that the unit pricing provided, the contract amount of $333,259.04 to be funded from the local roads capital improvement account, an estimated amount of $70,566.45 for paving a Forest Avenue to be funded from bond proceeds, and an estimated amount of $102,558.90 for paving a portion of the Bayside Road to be funded from future financing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fordy? All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Item nineteen, Council Order 071709, Discussion in Action on the Request of the City Planner to Approve the Agreement with WHCA for CDVG Housing Assistance Program Administrative Services. Good evening.
Good evening. So we have a signed and encumbered contract with the State of Maine in the amount of $300,000 for housing rehabilitation. We put a new package, you saw that we had to go to bid, so there was a request for qualification that was prepared and that was posted in the public notices of the Ellsworth American. We only received one proposal, which is WHCA. The proposal is the, we are allowed to use up to 20% of the grant amount. The proposal we received is less than 20%, is $40,500. That means that for every $100 of rehab work that is done, we're going to spend $15.61 on administration. It may seem high, but it's not. Actually, I believe they are to also use some other funds that they have. They're going to be using other program funds that they have to match for the actual rehab work and they're going to be mixing also some of the admin monies from that. It's actually very little. The amount of requirement that we have to meet is quite high, so I would recommend that you consider allowing the manager to sign the contract with WHCA.
Thank you. This is, this type of arrangement we've used many times in the past, could satisfy this, correct?
Similar, yes, correct. We have, yes.
It's not, not something new. Mr. Fordy?
I'd suggest, Ms. Chairman, that the responsibility they're taking on is worth lots more than that 15.607%.
That's what I was trying to say.
This is gonna be a headache and I applaud them for partnering, partnering with us to get this done.
Yeah. It's, you've said it, it's, you couldn't say it any better.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed in the write-out that you, that you gave us that it, some of these, that rental units qualify for this program?
Rental units?
Rental units.
Single-family rental qualify, yes. Not, it has to be a single-family though.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I personally don't like that. I think that, that it's, it should be for homeowners to provide safe, good, but not for, for landowners or landlords that are making money off of a property.
So you probably saw that there were two scoring sheets and one of the scoring sheet is for the rental. The person that rents has a higher bar to meet. They will have to, they can't resell the, so it's a forgiven loan. If they resell the property within 15 years, they will have to pay us back. And they also have to agree to A, lease, to lease the apartment, the house to low and moderate income people, so that people that qualify, in addition to have a rent, which is an affordable rent per main state housing authority. And that will be looked at every year.
I understand what you're saying. I just, for the initial outlay of this, I would personally prefer it went to low-income homeowners in the city and not, not landlords who are making money off of this program. It improves their property and, I don't know, they, they aren't the low-income folks that I thought that this would, would help.
If I could interject?
Go ahead, Mr. Crossley.
Mr. Chair, the thing to keep in mind, I think, here is, is that this is money from main state housing, it's really federal pass-through money. We don't have any say in where the money comes from, we don't have any say really in the, in the requirements.
Actually, we do.
To what extent though?
So we could have chosen to do multifamily of all kinds, we could have chosen just to do multifamily, we have chosen to do...
Before you get into this, now this is the same thing we had the workshops on and discussed it and got to this point too.
Correct.
So this isn't the first time, this has been for the council.
So...
And the agreement you're seeing in front of us, I think, has been hashed and...
Correct. So what you, so I give you all the paperwork, because I guess I like to, to do that, but correct, we have, this has, those guidelines were developed with a committee and were actually adopted by the city council. But I just wanna say that the city, the committee chose to present to the council, single-family, both in the rent, a rented unit, in a homeowner-type of unit. There's a lot higher threshold for the rental, if you look at the scoring criteria, I think is going to be, I think that it is, it's more likely that the homeowner will rank higher in number of points and are gonna come first, because 300,000 is not gonna go far.
No.
We could always, if we decide to do another round, we could always amend the guidelines at a later time.
We did, we had some discussions, I think, I'm going through this before, and it came out the way it is, this way it's presented to you now. Tonight basically is to allow it to move ahead with all of us doing the paperwork.
Mr. Chair, I would note that it's not a surprise they're the only bidder. This kind of work is fairly specialized, you wanna steady hand in control of this as there are a number of federal regulations that have to be met. And from previous jobs I've worked with, with WHCA, they do a good job at this kind of thing, a comfort I share, council, 40 years' comfort knowing that we have an experienced hand at the helm.
Motion please?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agreement with WHCA upon securing a signed and incumbent contract between the City of Ellsworth and the State of Maine in the amount of $300,000.
Second. Move from second. All those in favor? unanimous.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. The amount of the contract with WHCA is 40,500? Is that what, is that what was said?
300,500?
No, 40,500 is the contract with WHCA.
And did you miss a half a cent?
Administration fees.
I think they'd love to be hired for 300,000, but I'm gonna have a problem with that.
Well...
I did write 300,000, did I? And I forgot it.
Certainly did.
Gary, you weren't paying attention.
How would you like to change that?
Take the money and run.
Shall we amend the motion?
Shall we erase that one and try again?
Well, just stop and look at the motion. Move to approve the agreement with WHCA upon securing a signed and incumbent contract between the City of Ellsworth and the State of Maine in the amount of $300,000. The, the motion is precise.
So it covers the whole global amount?
Correct.
And then the manager will sign the contract allowing them only 15.607 or 40,500?
What that does is, what, what that does is it prevents them from coming to us if we don't get the secured contract from state and saying, "You got a contract for 40,500 dollars, write me a check."
Agreed.
You're right. Always on.
So you are correct.
Good save, Gary.
Terputation.
Cover ya.
Good, good save.
And I did it okay.
All right. At this point, at this point, stop talking and sit down.
No, later.
Item twenty, Council Order 071710, Request of the Police Chief to Award a Bid for Two New 2017 Police Cruises. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. So I'm asking that the council award Quirk Ford of Augusta the bid for two 2017 Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive Vehicles with the base price of $28,195 per vehicle, less the trade of $4,090, the base price, bringing the base price for each vehicle down to $26,150.
Also noticing your request that you wanted a vehicle that actually existed instead of a non-existing one, the imaginary car. So your delivery times will be much more in line with what you're hoping?
Yeah, in the past, we've experienced a significant delay in the delivery of the vehicles. Most recent, it was November, year before it was January before we had one of our vehicles online. This creates a significant amount of problems for us when we have older vehicles that we're trading in. Those vehicles continue to rack up mileage, which depreciates the value of the trade, so the initial trade that was offered isn't necessarily what we can actually get at the time of trade if we have to extend the period so long for waiting for the new ones to come in. It also runs into, you know, issues with potential breakdowns or extensive repair work that needs to be done to those vehicles that we're currently hoping to trade. In this particular year, we have one vehicle which has, currently has 145,000 miles on it and we continue to use that vehicle over the next three to four months and an average of 2,000 miles a month. You know, the, the potential is there for either one, a catast, catastrophic breakdown, which is gonna run into significant funds to repair in order to trade the vehicle in or lose out on the $4,000 value in the trade altogether.
Now, that's a good, good of your decision. In the special conditions, it says some note about the door wrap, isn't, is that something that's acceptable to you apparently with what's coming in stock?
Right, correct. We, when we, last year when we purchased the four vehicles and we switched from, to the black and the white vehicles, the, the vehicles come in black and then the doors, the four doors are actually wrapped in a vinyl wrap. And, and that's, that's customary. So it's, it's expected that we would have to have that done at the dealership. The benefit to that, as opposed to painting, is that when we go to get rid of the vehicle, trade the vehicle back in, then you peel the wrap off and it's, the vehicle's all one color, so it doesn't depreciate the value of the vehicle.
Couple of comments, and also, Chief, didn't we have a problem with the four last year? They forgot the top of the door?
They did.
So that's why it was specified problem.
Absolutely, yeah.
And the only thing I'll do and play devil's advocate here with my friend Don, they didn't meet your specs.
I know.
You demanded cars in 14 days, they're saying 38.
Unfortunately, they're the only bid that we received, so...
I know. I'm just remembering, I'm just remembering that Dodge or that three-quart ton we talked about a little while ago.
Oh, you're far enough back to remember. Elvets of all those.
Yes, I do.
All right. Yes, Mr. Moore?
There's been some concern in recent years with regards to the high mileage and so forth, and I understand that the police department has come up with a, a solution of signing a certain car to, to officers. I was just curious as to how well that's working.
Well, it's been, it's been successful on a couple of different levels. We've reduced the average mile... Uh, we've reduced the average mile, monthly mileage that's put on the vehicle from around four, four thousand miles a month to around two thousand miles a month. So virtually cut the mileage in half that each vehicle is, is receiving monthly. Um, the way we were able to do that is last year, when the council approved the purchase of the four vehicles, we were able to in, increase our frontline fleet to a total of five cruisers. And when we did that, we, we were able to assign each shift, uh, to a particular cruiser. So what happens is the midnight shift, for example, which they come on at nine P.M. and work till seven in the morning, the two midnight shifts that work opposite each other, so when one's working, the other, the other officer's off, they're assigned a particular vehicle. So that vehicle's only driven on that midnight shift. So rather than driven round the clock, twenty-four, seven, it sits idle from seven in the morning until nine o'clock at night. And so in doing that, we've, we've been able to keep the mileage down dramatically on the vehicles that we currently have, which will prolong their life, give them, you know, extend their period of use to us. And also it's reduced the, significantly reduced the, uh, frequency in which we have to have our vehicles serviced. We service our vehicles every six thousand miles. So at, at three to four thousand miles, four thousand miles a month, you're servicing your vehicle every six weeks. Two thousand miles, you go three, three months before having a service on the vehicles. So it's enabling us to, to stretch that out and, um, and reduce that, that overall cost to the, uh, to the city as far as the maintenance goes on the vehicles. And it's also been successful in the sense that the officers, um, now, instead of getting into a vehicle which they may have never, haven't driven in weeks, they're now getting into vehicles which they're driving on a regular basis and, uh, on a daily basis for, in most cases. So they're familiar with the vehicle, they're familiar with any sort of, you know, dents or dings, uh, they're also familiar with any noises, creaks, or unusual sounds that the vehicle may be making, and they're reporting those things to the command staff much quicker so that we can, in turn, get those repairs done as needed. Um, and they just take a general, uh, ownership of the vehicles, so they're keeping them cleaner. Um, if, if they ding the, scratch the bumper, they're, you know, or something of that nature, they're reporting it to us immediately because they, they take pride in the vehicles as being, you know, assigned to them and being part of their own. It also has helped us with storage, 'cause as you know, our, our quarters are kinda, are kinda tight and with each patrol officer, you have a patrol bag and you have a patrol rifle and you have a whole lot of gear that goes along with them. And with these SUVs especially, we're, we're able to store a lot of that equipment in the back of the vehicles while the officers are working between their shifts. And it has eliminated, alleviated some of our storage issues within the department and within our locker room for the officer's property that they take with them when they're on patrol. So it, it's been, it's been very beneficial.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yes?
With regard to the bid, and I think, Gary, I think you mentioned this before, um, you put in here that, in the specs, that you require delivery within fourteen days. You had one bid and it does not meet that specs. So if you amend that going forward, you might have more bids. Maybe the, the dealership just can't meet that criteria and that's why others did not put bids in.
Have you been down by Quirk Auto in Augusta? They're the largest state police, largest police cruiser, they beat everybody. We've never bought a cruiser that I can remember from anybody but Quirk. They got the corner on the market. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but it's, it's the reason why nobody else bids.
They have, apparently, they've, they're ordering status, so their business philosophy is they're the only one that's keeping the stuff in stock and...
Well, they obviously don't have it in stock if it's gonna take thirty-eight days, then this is meeting the... What's that?
They must be hard items.
Me neither.
I'd suggest there's probably twenty of them in the parking lot right now that it's open for.
But if they can't get it to meet the bids, then the smaller dealerships can't either. All I'm suggesting is, if you give them a bigger bidding period, there may be a, a chance for others to meet.
Last year, our last year's bid, uh, we gave sixty days, um, and up to ninety days for delivery. And, um, we still only received one bid from Quirk. And so, uh, you know, the experience has been that, um, Quirk does have the vehicles on, on hand for the most part. Uh, the only reason they were unable to meet our exact specifications and come in within the fourteen days is due to the fact that none of the vehicles that they had on, on the lot met the other requirements that we have as far as for the Bluetooth and the backup cameras and the other safety features that we are requiring in our, in the vehicle, in the bid spec. So had it not been for all of those specifications, being black in color and those things, um, certain that they would have been able to meet that requirement. But, uh, again, we, we had specific things that we were looking for in the vehicle that made it, stretched it out a little bit longer, but certainly within a timeframe that, that we can work with and will be much more conducive to getting our vehicle turnover. Because in addition to the wait time for the vehicles, when we actually get the vehicles, we also have to schedule rounds. Uh, they take a week to do all of the installation that's required and then we have to do the, the, uh, other stenciling or other lettering on the vehicles. So you're looking at a two-to-three week additional time period before the vehicle's ready for the road, so...
They don't come with lights and radios and all that?
They do know.
You have to get all that done separately.
It's all done, that's all done locally at Brown's Communications. So there's an extensive amount of ti, of work that has to go into the vehicles once we get them. So again, that pushes back the timeframe. Um, and when you're, again, when you're going into, you know, running against vehicles that are, that are, have higher mileage and the object is to get the newer vehicles on the road, get those other vehicles into a position where they're not racking up as, as much mileage, then the sooner we are able to do that, the better, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the request of the chief of police to award a bid to Quirk Ford of Augusta in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred dollars for two new twenty-seventeen police cruisers to be funded from the police cruiser capital improvement account, nine zero nine zero nine zero zero dash five nine zero zero seven.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor? You got it. Thank you. Item twenty-one, council order zero seven one seven eleven, request of the city manager to extend the contract with Acadia Disposal District to accept their recyclable products through June thirty, twenty twenty.
Hi. So, uh, for the past eight years, the city's contracted with Acadia Disposal District, or also known as ADD. Uh, Acadia Disposal District is made up of five island communities, including Mount Desert, Frenchboro, Tremont, Trenton, and Cranberry Island. Uh, four of the five communities participate in the recycling contract. Uh, the city returns eighty percent of the recycling revenues back to ADD that's generated from these communities and retains twenty percent in administrative fees. They also pay us twenty-six thousand dollars annually to help offset labor and maintenance and benefits, um, to ensure that there's no financial impact to the taxpayers. Um, over the past year, nearly thirty, uh, no, sorry, three hundred tons of recyclables have been processed at the recycling center and we've returned about twenty thousand dollars back to ADD. Um, ADD board is very pleased with the relationship and they wish to extend the contract. I also wanted to note that based on the discussions at Friday morning's finance committee meeting, um, that the corrections were made to the signature line and rider B, which is the delivery slip for ADD and the main resource recovery quality specifications, uh, will be attached to the contract.
Thank you. Questions in this mode? Ms. Moore? Motion, then?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of city manager to extend the contract with Acadia Disposal District to accept their recyclable products through June thirty, twenty twenty, and authorize the city manager to sign the document on behalf of the city of Ellsworth.
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous. Item twenty-two, council order zero seven one seven one two, request to adjust the fiscal twenty eighteen budget to account for changes to revenues and appropriations impacted by the recent passing of the biennial state of Maine budget for fiscal years twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So we had to request the table?
So move.
Second. All those in favor? Item twenty-three is executive session to discuss labor contracts in accordance to MRSAs Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section Four Oh Five, Paragraph Six D. And I guess, one of the two needs to be tabled, we have only one contract to discuss.
The, I would, I would move to remove this from the agenda.
Remove it from the agenda?
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Remove would be best...
Oh, just a sec. Heidi, would you rather have the last one so your nutman's run right?
Second. All those in favor? Okay. Get care of that. Item twenty-five, executive session to discuss labor contracts in accordance to MRSAs Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section Four Oh Five, Paragraph Six D.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous. Item twenty-six...
Anybody else?
Oh, sorry, you ready? Don't worry about the rest of them, it'll be done before they get them in here. Item twenty-six, council order zero seven one seven one four, discussion in action is needed on the item from executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Ah.
Um, do we want Terry to give some information for us before I make a motion?
Human Resources, for public record?
Yes, Terry Danese, the Human Resources Manager. Um, as we discussed in session, the Ellsworth Highway Department employees who were formerly represented by the AFSMI unit have filed for decertification from AFSMI. That decertification was accepted by the Main Labor's Relation Board in June of two thousand seventeen. I'm here tonight asking how you want me to proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move to acknowledge the decertification of the Highway Department AFSMI contract and direct staff to create a personnel audit specifically for the Highway Department employees.
Second. All those in favor? Perfect.
Move to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Discussion?
We're done.